Welcome everybody to this meeting of the Planning Decisions Committee, Yarra Council, September meeting. Sorry for the delay, we were caught up in an important meeting upstairs. Yarra City Council acknowledges the Wurundjeri and Wurung people as the traditional owners and true sovereigns of the land now known as Yarra. We acknowledge their creator's spirit, Bunjil, their ancestors and their elders. We acknowledge the strength and resilience of the Wurundjeri and Wurung who have never ceded sovereignty and retain their strong connections to family, clan and country despite the impacts of European invasion. We also acknowledge the significant contributions made by other Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people to life in Yarra. We pay our respects to elders from all nations here today and to their elders past, present and future. We have all councillors here tonight with the exception of councillor Crossland who is on paternal leave, all the relevant officers. Councillors, are there any... I'm going to ask you a question and just respond. I do, if you do not have a conflict of interest. Deputy Mayor Sarah Mackenzie, do you declare you have familiarised yourself with the matters being presented to this meeting and that you do not have a conflict of interest?
I do.
Councillor Austin?
I do.
Councillor Davies?
I do.
Councillor Gomes?
I do.
Councillor Harrison?
I do.
Councillor Ho?
I do.
Councillor Wade?
I do.
Confirmation of the August PDC meeting, the minutes? Would anyone like to move those minutes? Councillor Austin, secondaire. Councillor Harrison always have great trouble getting a secondaire and a mover for these minutes. Anyone want to speak against the minutes? No? All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has passed unanimously. We now move on to the business reports. There's only one agenda item tonight, 418 Burnley Street. So what we're going to do is, we're going to hear first up if there's any questions to the officers from councillors, and then we'll go to the various speakers we've got tonight, the applicant, and then obviously some objectors have registered to speak. So first up, councillors, have you got any... you've all read the report. Do you have any immediate questions to the officers? You will get a second shot at this later. No? Oh, councillor Davies, sorry. Yep. Yes, if you've got a question to the officers, you just press your button. So councillor Davies is going to be asking a question to the officers of the officers' report which you've probably all read. Councillor Davies, I'm in your hands.
Hi there. How are you going? I just wanted to point directly to the report. Can you tell us how many occupants will be in the building? Because I noticed in the report it didn't seem to detail it. Can you give us an outline of how many occupants are actually anticipated for a building of this scale?
Through you, Chair. So there's 10 levels. So at ground level, there's a food and drinks premise. There's also an office, and then there's an office tenancy at each level above.
Thank you. Follow up?
Yeah, so do you actually have a unit number, the number of people? 100, 200, 1,000? How many people actually be in that building on a daily basis?
Mary Osman's going to take that up.
Through you, Mayor. The planning scheme doesn't require that information to be submitted to council, so we're not aware of how many physical people will be occupying the building. We have information regarding the square metreage of each use, but beyond that, we don't have any further information.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions at this stage? No. Thank you, officers. Oh, sorry. Councillor Davies?
What's the maximum number under the scheme, what's the maximum number of parking spaces that this building can actually, is required, the maximum amount?
Paragraph 29. Yep, go ahead.
So through you, Mayor. So the car parking reduction for the site is 134 spaces.
So 134 is the maximum?
Councillor Davies, if you just go to paragraph 29 of the report, the number of spaces required under the local plan scheme is 162. The number of spaces allocated is 28, so therefore the reduction sought is 134.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make that.
Thank you. Any more questions, councillor? Okay, thank you, officers. So what we're going to do now, we're going to hear from the applicant and the objectors. You're all going to get five minutes each. When you all finish, we can ask you questions. You don't have to answer them if you don't want to, both to the applicant and to the submitters. And then after that, we'll decide. There's only one of three things that we can do. We either support the officer recommendation in totality, we either reject the officer recommendation in totality, or we support the officer recommendation with extra conditions. So for example, just theoretically, if it was a 10-storey, we could potentially say knock off one storey if it was a block of apartments on Napier Street or whatever here in Fitzroy. So the reason I say that is when you're talking, try and be specific. Tell us, you know, during your five minutes, exactly what you want us to do. Support, reject or support with extra conditions. And if it's the final one, what exactly are those extra conditions? And that's the process from here on in. So the first person, I've got Shem Curry, Contour Consultants. Welcome, Shem. When you get up, just press that button and when the red thing comes on, you've got five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors and officers. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Shem Curry. I'm the director at Contour Consultants, who are the town planning consultants who represented the applicant through the planning process. The applicant for this proposal is Kakota Property Group. I think it's important for this site to start with what the local policy says, and the local policy explicitly encourages employment in this part of Richmond. And further to that, it encourages mid-rise built form which this proposal sits within. The building height is less and subservient to the Swan Street Major Activity Centre, which is located on the opposite side of the rail corridor. So you're getting a built form setting which is a higher built form within the major activity centre on the north side of the railway corridor, and coming down to a lower built form on the south side. This type of commercial development warrants council support in an extremely challenging environment for office developments currently. The site is on the doorstep of a major activity centre and has direct access to public transport via Burnley Street. The building has no unreasonable amenity impacts to residential areas. Appreciating that being able to see a building does not constitute unreasonable amenity impacts. The project's ESD credentials are excellent under council's local policy. The use of cars is restricted, and this is explicitly encouraged. If there's ever a spot to encourage low car parking rates, it is this site. The proposal itself also includes onsite bicycle facilities and end-of-trip facilities to facilitate sustainable transport. The building is designed by McHugh Studios with Chris McHugh being an award-winning architect, so council can proceed with confidence that this will be a quality development which lasts the test of time. Kakota Property Group, who currently have an office in the city of Yarra, are the developer and intended first tenant of this building. They have a strong record of producing high-standard developments in Victoria, and this includes a 12 to 17-storey mixed-use development directly adjacent to Malvern Station, which is close to completion. We note that this development has received full council officer support, subject to conditions, and it has minimal VCAT objector parties, with three registered in the proceeding. The three who are registered are located between 260 and 460 metres from the site, so it's extremely unlikely that they will be significantly detrimentally impacted by the proposal. We want to thank council officers for their work during the assessment process and their collaboration in getting to this point, including the conditions which have been accepted by our client. We respectfully request that council support the recommendation for the proposal and grant, or effectively take a position of granting support for the permit to be issued. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Shem. Councillors, do you want to ask any questions at this stage, or you get a sec? Councillor Davies?
Hey, how are you going? Just had a question, just coming back to what I was asking the officers. How many people do you, how many occupants do you anticipate in that building, given you've got close to 4,800 square metres there?
So it's anticipated there would be about 400 employees in the building?
Yeah, so it's roughly 10 square metres, 14 square metres per occupant?
That's correct.
How many of those, obviously you've modelled the building in terms of, you know, who you intend to have or sell it to, or however you wish to make money out of it. In your modelling, how many of those occupants do you anticipate being from outside of Yarra? How many will be commuting into your property?
So through the chair, the only, I guess, committed tenant to that building at the moment is the tenant themselves. Their current office is in the city of Yarra, it's in Richmond, and so they do have local employees to that area. But otherwise, the lease would be made available to the market. So I wouldn't be able to answer the rest of that question as to where everyone else would be from.
Thanks, Shem. Okay, thank you, sir. We might ask questions later on. Okay, we've got a couple of objectors. First up, we've got Mark Treskoetik. I've distorted that name, I'm sure. Mark, please come to the front as quick as you can. Press that button and you've got five minutes. Yeah, just press the button so we can hear you. And once you start talking, you've got five minutes. Thanks, Mark. Ah, yeah. That's very good. You need a passport to come from Richmond to Fitzroy. I think that's the point he's making. All right. Thank you, Mark. Go ahead.
First, I'd like to offer some apologies from residents who can't be here this evening. Trevor Rice, Matty Slav and John Squail. In brief, you've read my submission and you know my opinions, I'm sure. And that, I can tell you, broadly reflects the view of the Burnley pocket. This is a development that is clearly on the wrong side of the tracks. I want to refer, and even to be fair, I think the council's consultants think that. In the report from Blade Studio, I'll quote from it briefly, "The scale of the proposal will be markedly taller than that which currently exists on-site or has traditionally existed in the subject site's broader IN3Z pocket. However, we also note that the planning scheme seeks a far more intensive future in close proximity to the subject site", by which I mean the Swan Street Activity Zone. This site is not in that. But let's park that issue of it being the wrong building in the wrong place for a minute, and talk about parking. You'll see what I did there. The Australia Post building has hoovered up any and all available parking in the Burnley pocket. It's just the fact of the matter. It's irrefutable. Walk down there any day. The site of Australia Post employees' daily ritual of the midday walk to move their, all over the Burnley pocket, to move their cars from point A to point B, has become, well, it's enlivened the environment, let's just put it that way. It's made it more interesting. It hasn't made it any more easy for residents or guests to park. To now approve a 10-storey, 38-metre behemoth with an 84% reduction in parking would be, in my opinion, a sick joke on the Burnley pocket. So, in summary, approving a building of this size, one, next door to a building with its own historical significance listing in the Duttons Building; two, in a zone intended to be a buffer zone between the Swan Street Activity Zone and the residential around it; and three, with next to no parking in an already parking-deprived area, is straight-up bad urban planning. I can't describe it in any other way. I'd like to be nice, but I can't be. Worse, I think it will set a dreadful precedent for the future of how areas adjacent to the Swan Street Activity Zone and other activity zones progress. It certainly will only be of detriment to the Burnley pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dorothy James. The acoustics are really bad, so that's why people are taking a while to get up here. It's not that they don't want it, they've... Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Dorothy. Just come up and press the button and you've got five minutes, please. Just, sorry, just before you start, press the button. Thank you. You've got five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Dorothy James and I live in that small pocket of Burnley. A lot of what I want to say will reiterate exactly what Mark's been talking about. And I can hardly believe that they would wish to take out parking. It beggars belief. I think it's something like 83, 84% of the parking requirements. That's clearly not an option for the small local community site. Having the majority of our parking taken over Monday to Friday by commercial office workers. The four-hour parking was probably put in because there's no designated railway park at Burnley, so people could perhaps catch a train or tram and go to the city and get back to their cars on time. That's not an option for people anymore either. Little or no parking left for the locals, their visitors, who might like to park somewhere in close vicinity to their own homes. Not an unreasonable request for the locals. Currently, residents are subsidising this free parking for the Australia Post staff, and I imagine if they put this building up with their parking reduction on it, there'll be even more cars. Commercial buildings elect these addresses because they have excellent parking options. I'm sure that's why Australia Post went there, and I have no doubt that's part of why they might be wanting to build that site. In the last six to eight weeks, the parking issue from Australia Post has become significantly worse. No longer just the local main streets, but it's now into more of our residential streets. Yarra professes to support local traders. Currently, there's no parking for the customers of our local businesses either. You can't run a business if you can't get people in. To date, it appears Yarra have taken minimal effort to rectify our local parking invasion, which is what it feels like. Still few visits from the parking offices. A significant issue, this redevelopment of Burnley Street, will seriously compound our local parking availability for the traders and residents, and ratepayers are expected to continually subsidise this. It's not okay. My other issue is the lighting. Currently, Australia Post signage and lighting diminishes the local residents' amenity. It's on 24/7, internal lights also. This proposed redevelopment needs controls on their signage and building lights to restrict this problem escalating any further. These buildings border a small residential area, and we all pay rates, and we'd like some more consideration from Yarra by these commercial corporates that intend on impeding our local amenities. We need more than just platitudes, we need immediate action and to cease the invasion of our small residential pocket being further destroyed by more developers and commercial buildings. I understand they are entitled to build on those sites, but surely the residents have a right to have their amenity maintained as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Can you just press that button on your way back? Thank you. Councillors, I'm looking for any questions to... Yes, councillor Harrison? To who? No, that's all good. Councillor Harrison?
So my first question revolves around the suggestion that most people could be travelling to these offices on public transport, or they could be cycling. Is the location compliant with the New Deal for Cycling Networks specifications that Yarra has set? Can you confirm that?
Miss Osman's going to take that question.
Through you, Mayor. The cycling network does include non-compliant cycle routes. However, the planning team are confined to considerations that are outlined within the planning scheme, and the planning scheme doesn't require that cycling paths to a development site are compliant. The non-compliance to the cycling network is a council policy that doesn't sit within the planning scheme. I guess I'm coming to the question of why something which has been acknowledged by councils' statutory transport officers as being a rat one is being put up as a good cycle route and amenable for people seeking to cycle to an office where that has been presented as a principal option for people getting to the office?
Through you, Mayor. The comments from councillor Harrison are acknowledged. It is, it isn't an ideal cycling network. However, it is acknowledged that there are cycling facilities that enable cyclists to and from the site. But again, I reiterate that the statutory planning team are confined to considerations that are included within the planning scheme only.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillor Harrison?
Yes, with regards to the parking provisions, I note that the traffic's report indicates that somewhere between 96 and 95% of parking spaces were occupied on the day when they conducted their surveys, which was the 28th of January, which might be a day when there's not lots of people at work around a public holiday, et cetera. My understanding is that if we are considering a reduction in the number of parking spaces provided in that building, that we have to consider the local amenity, and there is clearly an issue with parking in that area. And I will add my own observations here. As the local ward councillor, on one day I had five residents of that area come to me to say, "We have got acute parking problems". I've had people from as far away as Manton Street say that they are affected by the Australia Post workers parking in their streets. And as one of the people here today has mentioned, they're very obviously workers from Australia Post because they are going around with their lanyards. I'm concerned that we are going to be affecting the local amenity by having Australia Post mark two on that site with no consideration of how we might be affecting the amenity of that area by approving another building, which, as we've heard here, would be having up to 400 people working in that building on any building on any given day.
Is there a question there?
Yes, I'm asking, how are we supposed to balance the needs and the amenity for the local community versus the parking issues that we know are there? And the council officers are very aware.
Thank you. Officers, do you want to respond to that question, please? And then we've got councillor Davies after that.
Through you, Mayor. So, look, we've referred the application to our development engineers, and they were satisfied that there would not be unreasonable impacts on the traffic and the parking within the area. Further to that, there's been quite a few developments within the municipality that have approved no car parking spaces or a reduction in the office rate. So, given the site's location to the public transportation, you know, the Burnley Station, 90 metres, and the Swan Street trams, it was determined that a car parking reduction will be satisfied and wouldn't unreasonably impact the current traffic and existing parking within the area.
Thank you. Just, I just want to ask a question to the crowd, just a point of order. Can anyone in the back hear any of this?
No.
Okay. It's just feedback for governance, maybe next time that there's an issue with sound that people in the crowd can't hear, and especially if you're an applicant or an objector, you probably want to be hearing these questions and these answers. So, yeah, you're sitting here, do you want to come forward a bit? It'd probably be a lot easier and cheaper.
Yeah, the events.
Just sit in the front row, yeah. Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, you can do that as long as you don't start attacking any of the councillors. Just stop, stop about there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. And if anyone else can't hear, just move forward. If you're okay, sweet. You don't have to move, I'm just making the offer. We've got councillor Davies and then councillor Wade. Councillor Davies?
Yeah, I just want to jump on the, on the back of councillor Harrison's question about how, how we're going to deal with the amenity. And I do have a question about your point about the train, the train station's just up the road. I just had a look at the Bureau of Statistics. Roughly a third, actually over a third, according to the Bureau of Statistics up in 2021, a third of people who come in, who commute, commute by car. A third, a minimum of a third. In Yarra, it's more than 70% of people who are, who have jobs in Yarra are from outside of Yarra. So, by that number, we would probably have, let's say we've got 480 people roughly that we can fit in that building, 400 to 480. 70% of 480.
Is there a question here?
Yeah, I just want to ask, how did, so I just want to do the number first, if that's okay, Mayor. So, we've got 480. I just want to do this quick number for you. 480 times 70% of people coming in, 337 divided by three, because a third of those will be commuting, okay? So, we'll divide that by three. So, we should expect at least 112 cars by that, that numeric, that, that calculation coming in for this building, okay? That's, that's based on the Bureau of Statistics. So, my question is, how do you establish that only 28 car spaces is adequate? And how did you actually come to the conclusion that the transportation needs in the area were going to be sufficient? Because by the Bureau of Statistics and the numbers, and by the amount of people coming into this building, I have real questions. So, I would actually like to know how 28 people, 28 car parking spaces is adequate for a building of this size, and how you can actually address the impact of amenity that councillor Harrison raised, because it's clear that it will not be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Officers, do you want to respond to that, please?
Through you, Mayor. I take on board 112 cars, but equally, the answer is not to bring 112 cars into the area. We have a thriving precinct in Cremona where we have office buildings that provide very little and minimal car parking, and that is working, and that is also within proximity to public transport. If you provide more car parking, more people are going to try and drive into the, into the centre, and by not providing the car parking, you're making it harder for people to do it. So, they will make other alternatives, and given the proximity to the public transport options, this is why it's been supported by councils' traffic engineers.
Councillor Wade?
It's on the same topic.
I've got a follow-up from councillor Davies.
With all due respect, officer, how do you establish that Cremona's working when Bellmain Street and Cremona Street are absolutely chock-a-block day and night? I'd like to know, I'd just like to know where the, where the data that you're referring to for Cremona is actually available. To prove your point, please, because the residents and myself would have grave doubts of that reality.
Mary Osmond?
Through you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. I need to separate people's views on whether you like cars or you don't like cars, or you have a preference to drive or not. The planning scheme is clear in having car parking rates. It also allows applicants to seek waivers of those parking rates. An assessment has been undertaken by councils' engineers who have supported the, the parking waiver. It is fact there are trams, trains that have access to this site, and there are other alternatives for people other than driving a vehicle. It is a personal choice, and someone may choose to drive. Equally, someone may choose to walk, or may choose to catch the tram. There's been, the question has been put to council officers about how their view has been established that Cremona is working. While not relevant to this application, Cremona is a thriving commercial precinct and has the support of the state government and continues to grow. I don't know how much more relevant, relevancy it has to the consideration of this application, but I will say an assessment has been made. Officers has put forward a recommendation, and now councillors will ultimately decide whether they wish to support that or not.
I'm just going to make a point of order, just especially to the new councillors. So, I'm not talking to councillor Wade here, because she's super experienced and a lawyer. But like, this meeting tonight is around a specific planning application, and we have to determine it on its merits with the local and the state planning scheme and every other overlay that exists. It's not like a council meeting or a ward meeting where we can have a debate about how things are going, parking, we need more cars, we need fewer cars, we need this, we need that. It's, it's quite restricted in what we're supposed to be talking about. So, I'm going to ask councillors, when you have, like, you can say all of this when you move in second and debate this motion, and definitely at a council level and in the community, but at this level, at this meeting, we're determining it on its merits and not, I mean, maybe that's unfortunate, but that's just the laws, it exists, and not on what's going on in other parts of the municipality, even if that is, some people here might think that that's a little bit unfair and illogical. But we, we are working to certain restricted rules at a PDC meeting. We're going to go to councillor Wade next.
Thank you, Mayor. And after you've been very kind, I'm going to ask a question that I think is an adjunct, but if you'll allow it, and if you don't, that's fine. My question is, it sounds like there are already problems in the precinct. Is that something that outside of this process we could look to solve? So, is that something that we could talk to the planning, the parking team about, that we could talk to enforcement officers about, about doing more in the Burnley precinct?
Mary Osmond? Ms. Osmond?
Through, through you, Mayor. Council officers are aware of the impacts that the Australia Post building are having on the precincts. They have been reported, not only by some of the residents, but also councillor Harrison has raised this specifically with officers. The parking crew have increased their patrolling of the area and will continue to monitor, and are also testing some changes to the parking restrictions within the area. Thank you.
Councillor Gomez?
I think we've got a question on point. Page 121 of the report. Strategic planning have raised a few concerns about the application, particularly the height and the building design and separation to the south. Could I ask either of you to comment on those concerns?
Paragraph 121?
Page 121.
Page 121. Officers, when you get to that, if you could, one of you could respond, please, and then councillor Aston after that.
Through you, Mayor. So, the, the location of the site, there are no strict built-form direction, in that there's no design and development overlay. So, we've had to, I suppose, although we do, we have considered these comments, we've also had to take into consideration the, the site context and urban design comments, and in this instance, they outweighed these recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Aston?
You're going to hate me, I'm going back to parking. On point 15, it says there's a total of 20, point 15, says there's a total of 28 car parking spaces and includes two motorcycle parking spaces. So, that is, is that there's a total of 28, 26 for cars and two for motorcycles?
Through you, Mayor. So, 28 car parking spaces and two motorcycle, motorcycle spaces.
Great. So, there's 30 car, 30 spaces in all, 28 cars, two motorbikes.
Yes.
And councillors, any other, excuse me, questions? I'm looking for a suggested way forward. Councillor Harrison?
I have an answer.
If you could just give us a gist of it, and if this is secondary, you can speak to it. Councillor Davies is speaking, is seconding it. Well, you might as well just take your five minutes starting now. Thank you. Or three minutes, I should say. Actually, yeah, maybe before you speak to it, just describe what the motion is, yeah. Please.
Okay, so, it's a refusal motion on the grounds that the building would be substantially taller than the other buildings on the south side of the railway lines, and would provide an unacceptable design response in relation to the building height, form and mass, and also on the grounds that the car parking in spite, site is insufficient and fails to comply with the provisions of clause 18,24301 and clause 52067 of the AARAPLANN planning scheme.
Councillor Davies, so we're going to give you your three minutes to speak to this, starting now. Councillor Harrison?
Okay, so, as the local ward councillor, I am a regular visitor to this area, so I actually see this myself. I regularly cycle down in the middle of the day and seen every car parking space full. I've seen all of the spaces around the local park full, even though there was actually nobody at the park. I've, there was one day recently where I literally had five residents of that area in one day speak to me about the issues with parking in that area. It doesn't just affect the Burnley Pocket in terms of the Australia Post workers, it's, it affects even two blocks north of Swan Street. So, we have seen exactly what has happened when a similar building has been built, slightly taller, I'll admit, but we literally have huge numbers of office workers who, despite the fact that they have a tram right in front of their front door and a train line at the back door, are actually choosing to drive their cars to this location. It is not a great location for cycling, and there is also a wonderful connection to the M1, which many, many people are no doubt availing themselves of. So, I'm just not satisfied that the local amenity will not be substantially affected if we simply wave off around 84% of the, the parking spaces required under the scheme. I also am very concerned of the, the scale of this building when all of the other buildings in the vicinity, the maximum is three stories. The building next door has a heritage listing, and it's, it's a low-rise area. There is, and there is no transition to this 10-storey height, which is outside the Swan Street Main Activity Centre. So, I just don't think it's appropriate for the area, and I'm calling on my fellow councillors to support this alternate motion this evening.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. Councillor Davies is seconding the motion. Your three minutes start now.
Thank you. I'd like to support everything that councillor Harrison just mentioned, and I thank her for taking the initiative on this alternative motion. I'm pro-development where it fits in with our community. I just want to make that really clear. There are some great developments, there's some architecturally-driven developments, there are some developments which have adequate parking and fit into the urban environment of Richmond and Burnley, but this is not one of them. This looks like a 1980s Nakatomi Plaza dropped in to Burnley and Richmond. It does not fit with our urban design aesthetic, to all the points that councillor Harrison just mentioned, in terms of build form. It's questionable, very questionable. I think on the point that we discussed earlier and raised a number of times, we are going to face at least 112 cars. The reality, the real-world reality, not the ideological version, not the academic university version. This is the 112 cars that we're going to see coming in onto our residents' streets, day in, day out. They're going to fill our streets alongside the other buildings. The parking here is insufficient in this application. In a different world where there was better parking, it would be a better application, and I'd be far more satisfied if it had more parking in it. I'd just say that directly to the developers, okay? This is not an anti-development station, statement. We need to face the reality that we need more parking in Richmond. This is what our people, this is what our community is calling for. They're calling for it at our town halls, they're calling it on the evening here tonight, for us to take the lead and provide that parking, and that's why I support this motion, alternative motion with, by councillor Harrison.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Councillor Aston?
I'm going to support this. And at the, at the risk of just reiterating everything that's been said, it is to do with parking. Like councillor Davies, I am pro-business, I am pro-development, but I do think the definition of insanity is knowing there's a problem and doing the same thing over and over again. We've had acknowledgement of the fact that there are parking issues related to the Australia Post building and the impost that it has on the local community. I personally know 12 people who work at the Australia Post building, and I contacted them, and I said, how do they get to work? Every single one of them drives three days a week. They never, ever take public transport, ever, because they're not on a direct line, and it's much quicker and much easier for them to drive. So, that's what they do. And people will make choices, and if we know that they will make choices, then we need to cater for the choices that are going to be made, as opposed to trying to engineer people's behaviour. So, I feel that this development is very much at the, this proposal with the reduction in parking is very much at the benefit of the developer with an impost to be borne by the community, and so that's why I support this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? Councillor Wade?
I'm going to vote against, but I'll, I'll explain why, and I do empathise with the ward councillor wanting to put this forward. I think that is a very real problem in the Burnley Pocket, and I think councillor, ward councillor and the community members have explained that. What I think that means is we need to do something right now. We need to be looking at the parking conditions on the streets. We need to be maybe implementing more permit zones. We need to have officers out there every day, probably multiple times a day. The benefit of having currently one offender is that those people can learn. You know, some, in some areas of Yarra where we've got, like, regular visitors, but they're, they're different people at different times, they kind of just think, oh, well, I got fined. But if you work at Australia Post and you're getting a fine every day, you start learning the lesson. And if our fines aren't high enough, then, then we can look at that too. So, I, I think there's absolutely something we need to do, and something we need to do now. I think this is a reasonable number of parks for this building. Personally, aesthetically, it, no offence, it's, it's not my favourite plan I've seen, but we've got comments from all of our advisers saying that it does meet the regulations. I'm personally not interested in us sitting in VCAT to try to object to something that we've got experts saying does tick off all of our boxes. I don't think that's something that I want to put council our officers through or our budget through. So, I mean, on almost everything that has already been said, I agree. I think we need to safeguard parking for residents in Burnley. I think, I feel very strongly about that as well. But I don't think the way to do it is to say no to this development tonight. So, that's why I'll, I'll be voting against this motion, and if I, if I get an opportunity, I'll vote in favour of the officer recommendation. But just to explain it, but, but thank you for taking the time, everybody who's spoken tonight.
But ju- just to explain it, but um, but thank you for taking the time, everybody who's spoken tonight.
Thank you. Um, councillor Wade, I'll, I'll just say something. Um, this, this application is already at VCAT. Um, the applicant has taken advantage of their right with the sixty-day notice, they didn't get a decision within sixty days. So it's going to VCAT, or it's gone to VCAT, and VK, uh, VCAT are asking us tonight to give them our position on it. So, um, if it had been determined within the sixty days, which is really hard for these larger developments, so it's not not having a cheap crack here at the officers, it's almost impossible for them to do, get those things done within the sixty days. Then maybe I might have a different position, but I think it's important, because it is just giving our position to VCAT, that we make a stand, and one of the reasons I think I'm going to support councillor Harrison on this is that um it's a more nuanced position. We've spent a lot of time on the Swan Street Activity Centre, um, uh, 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 Activity Zone. Um, th- the overlay there, we've discussed with local businesses, with the community, with the council. Um, this is outside of that, but it's being ticked off or recommended for approval by officers on the basis that it's close to that activity centre. So that, as one applic- as one objector put it, is a de facto extension, undemocratically, of the activity centre. And as we get municipality, which is only nineteen square kilometres, more and more people are going to move in, hopefully more and more businesses move in too. We're going to have to get better at sharing, especially at the interface. That's why, for example, in my ward in Fitzroy, you can go crazy on Brunswick Street with with officers, uh, not with officers, sorry, with 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 nightclubs and bars and restaurants, but we try to protect the backstreets because a lot of people live in houses and apartments in in Ri- in Fitzroy, and it's the same here. Um, that if we allow people to lean on what they're permitted under the, like, a, 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 an activity centre, Swan Street One, and then go and use that even though they're outside of that thing, well, then we might as well give the game away. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, obviously, we have to give waivers. If we, if if we were stuck to the matrix, we would have no buildings in Yarra, because, for example, again, on Brunswick Street, every nightclub, every bar, every restaurant in Brunswick Street, by 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 the rules, has to supply X number of car parks. And we we wouldn't have any businesses if we made them do that, because they'd have to knock their building down and just have car parks up and down Brunswick Street. So waivers are a fact of life, they're, they're a necessary evil, or some people might see them as a good thing, but they're, they're not going to go away. But in this particular instance tonight, in relation to this particular um application, an over seventy percent waiver, I think, in the context of Australia Post and the general parking situation that we've heard from both councillor Davies and 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 Harrison tonight, is too much. Um, and but I do also agree that we should also try and move in on the permit stuff like councillor Wade said, so on that basis, um, I'm going to be supporting the motion. Would anyone else like to speak? Councillor, um, Deputy Mayor Mackenzie?
Thank you, and thank you for putting this forward, um, and for coming down here to Fitzroy tonight. Um, this eh is something that for a lot of us, and I'm a new councillor as well, um, has, I think, been understandably tricky. I've struggled with it where um I have my politics hat on and when I have my responsible authority hat on. Um, and uh the parking in that area, the parking in lots of areas in Yarra that aren't uh your sort of business district streets, um, I think can be forgotten a lot. Um, it's something that happens down in my ward, uh, and a lot more can be done about, I mean, how we are doing compliance. Um, but also different uh permits and parking system, it's part of the reason why we're reviewing that at the moment. Um, my only concern, and it is not against the the refusal, um, about it, my concern with this is that it's in BCAT. Um, and I suppose in my mind, this is our opportunity to put forward what our conditions would be um if we were to approve it. Uh, we've had similar things come to us before and um uh discussed, you know, how we would change different things within the plans uh that would allow us to approve it. Um, but I don't want to be sending something to BCAT that says, maybe I'm dead wrong about how this works, but I don't want to be sending something to BCAT that says, um, no, we don't want it when we have an opportunity to argue for changes within the plans. Um, I think it would be a different position if this was being a decision made by us, um, and, but it isn't uh at this point. Um, so for that reason, unless you can shine some light on that, um, uh councillor Harrison in your um writer reply, I I'm very much leaning, I think I will be voting um against this motion, but I appreciate it being put up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, and would you like to exercise your right of reply? You've got two minutes.
Yes, briefly, I just want to re-emphasise the point about um being in the wrong location on the wrong side of the tracks. This is not appropriate for the location for the reasons that have been described. Um, and we would simply be doing Australia Post Mark Two, making the problems twice as bad in that location. So, um, I urge my fellow councillors to support this refusal this evening.
Thank you. Uh, well, we go to the vote. All those in favour of the motion from councillor Harrison and Davies, please raise your hand. Councillor Davies, Gomez, Hojolly, Harrison, Aston, um, those against, deputy mayor Mackenzie, councillor Wade, that's carried. Um, officers, can you please let everybody know what happens from here on in, please?
Following this evening, council will advise uh the Victorian Civil and Administrative Tribunal and Objectors that had it been in a position to make a decision, it would have issued a notice of refusal.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and at six twenty-two, I'll close the meeting. Thank you. Seven twenty-two.